Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners, March 21st, 2023. We always start our meetings with silent prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance, so please bow your head for silent prayer. Stand if you.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the Constitution of the Republic, for which this stands, one nation, indivisible, and every creature in its essence.
Before we get started, I'd like to make a motion to excuse President Reese from our meeting.
Second.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Sumner Dumas.
Yes.
Thank you. We have two presentations today, both of them pertaining to MSD. We're going to take the most important one first, Mr. Renecamp. So we've got a proclamation recognizing the many, 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 many years of service of Jack Renecamp to our community. And so, Jack, if you'd like to come forward to the podium, please do that, and we're going to read off the proclamation.
Okay, we left off many, many, many.
Did I leave off a many?
Welcome. Good to see you.
Good to see you.
It's my pleasure to help read the proclamation. Whereas Jack Renecamp started his career with the City of Cincinnati in March 1982 as a mediator in the Law Department's private complaint program. And whereas in June 1984, Jack began working as a consumer protection investigator in the city manager's office, where he worked with the Cincinnati Police Department's Fraud Division to investigate and prosecute misdemeanor and felony-level home improvement scams against elderly and low-income homeowners. And whereas in 1990, Jack began working at MSD as its procurement manager, and in 1996 also became manager of MSD's stormwater removal program, which helped identify and remove illegal stormwater connections into the sanitary sewer system. Jack cites reviving, expanding the program as his greatest career accomplishment. And whereas in 2002, Jack was promoted to serve as MSD's legislative manager, and while serving as legislative manager, Jack also served as the manager of MSD's Sewer Assessment Program from 2002 to 2006, and as a manager of MSD Communications and Records from 2007 to 2009.
And whereas in 2019, Jack was promoted to Division Manager for MSD's Office of Director Division overseeing divisional operations as well as guiding various aspects of its communications, community engagement, and legislative programs. Additionally, in 2019, Jack was the co-lead for the development of MSD's Customer Assistance Program, which provides a 25% discount on sewer bills for low-income senior citizens, and co-led for MSD's 2019 to 2021 strategic plan. And whereas Jack also served as co-lead of City Pride, the city's first LGBTQIA+ employee resource group, from the group's inception in 2021 to March 2023. And whereas for the last 27 years, Jack has been privileged to have a wonderful husband, David Jackson, to share his life. Jack is retiring on March 31st, 2023, from MSD after 40 years of service. Jack's retirement will allow him and David to take the next steps in their life's journey together, focusing on family and friends, the national parks, and roller coasters, with David riding and Jack watching. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners recognizes the dedication and commitment of Jack Renecamp to the residents of Hamilton County, and does hereby proclaim March 23rd, 2023, as Jack Renecamp Day in all of Hamilton County. So, Jack, before we let you speak, I'm going to say a word. I know Commissioner Dumas will also like to say a word. It's been our pleasure to have you present on behalf of MSD at our many meetings over the years that I've been here. And you're just, you're smart, you have a good demeanor about sewers, and about some of the challenges that we have related to sewers. But, you know, you've been a trusted ally in all of those conversations. So thank you so much for your service. I didn't really, I didn't realize how extensive it was, but really thanks for all the dedication to the city and to the county. Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you so much. Just a consummate professional, and so I didn't know you, yes, for sewers, but I saw a lot about fraud that you were interested in and have been interested in. So maybe you'll do that later on in life after the roller coasters. But I certainly appreciate your honesty with your answers and your knowledge about MSD and what you have brought to the, not only MSD but to the county. And thank you for your commitment for all that time. So I appreciate you. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Would you like to say a word?
Of course. It'll be my parting, my parting commentary before you, as a city employee, and want to thank you all, including Jeff Aludo as administrator and President Reese, for honoring a city employee. That's very innovative, at least in my opinion, and very welcome, and I appreciate that from the bottom of my heart. One of the things that you've mentioned, and I've been before you for the last 20 years, literally, and there have only been, prior to me, three other MSD staff who handled legislation in the past 55 years. The fourth is already with you, Lauren DiGresia, and she'll be hopefully continually to be with you over the next several years, representing MSD's interests as well as presenting to you the various legislation that needs to come before your board to be approved. One of the things I wanted to leave you with is that has always seemingly guided me in my career as a public servant, is number one, service, the idea of service, and the idea of public service has always been very important to me. And I read from a quote that is on the auditor's website from an auditor, Hamilton County auditor, from 1888. Business and professional men, mechanics, farmers, laboring men, indeed all contribute to the support of our local government and thereby our taxpayers, directly or indirectly. And for this reason, they have a right to demand of public officers who are but their servants. And there's another quote that has also guided me over the years as a public servant, talking about service, and it's actually from one of my favorite pastimes is reading and watching science fiction. And the quote is, "Let me help." It actually comes from Star Trek, and I think that is a key quality of public servants. And what they need to express in their work is, "Let me help." And then another component is family, and I consider both the commission and the county as well as the city as part of my work family, beside my husband who's with me today. That's very important, and that we consider ourselves as a collaborative in service as well as a collaborative and working together with each other is one of the highest honors I can think of as a public servant. Thank you for the time that I've been in front of you, and I hope you have a wonderful rest of your careers as well.
Thank you, Jack.
Yeah.
Do you want Diana?
One would just say, three of you. Thank you.
All right, just come in. Thank you. I'm also, I'm going to make a motion to approve of the minutes of the previous session.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Sumner Dumas.
Yes, thank you. All right, our second MSD presentation, not as exciting as the first. We've got an update on the Mill Creek Treatment Plant with Diana Christie.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. Thank you so much for recognizing Jack, and that's a tough one to follow because this is not as pleasant of a conversation, but I certainly have always admired Jack, and it's going to be very hard to say goodbye next week, but no, he's not going to go too far, so.
True.
He promises to stay available. But I am here today to give an update on, I presented two weeks ago, on the Mill Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant, the power outage that we suffered on March 5th, and I'm going to give a little bit of background and then, you know, just kind of give you the status as of today. So as we mentioned on March 5th, the treatment plant suffered a catastrophic transformer failure, and we could not operate the wastewater treatment plant. As a consequence, there was a bypass of the treatment plant for three days, followed by a partial bypass for the next two days until we had primary and secondary treatment back online. Jumping to the end, we are today providing primary and secondary treatment of a minimum of 120 milligrams per day, and what that means is that's all of the dry weather flow that comes to our treatment plant. So in regular operations, we are at full treatment operation. Really just want to, at the outset, thank our operators and engineers and our full treatment plant staff for being all hands-on the last few weeks and doing everything we needed to get our equipment back up and running once we restored power. So briefly, background on this project, some of this was discussed previously, but we've been kind of continuing to flesh out the details. But background, we are in the process of a capital improvement project. It's the Mill Creek Substation Improvement. This is intended to replace two high-voltage transformers. These are redundant transformers, meaning each one can power the treatment plant, and they're associated switchgear at our substation. This is a very old and has been unreliable substation, and you may wonder why the treatment plant has its own substation, but that has been in place for about 50 years or longer now, that MSD has its own substation, and it's just a much more economical way for us to purchase power and to supply power to the plant than if we were just any other user of Duke Energy. And some of our other treatment plants do not have substations. We have to pay for dual feed from Duke. So a lot of reasons behind that, and more detail if you desire, but just wanted to provide that background. And the project is being delivered through a design-build contract. I mentioned previously, that was awarded to Patrick Engineering as a design builder. That means Patrick Engineering is responsible for the entirety of the job, so the design and the construction. So they are, it helps us in a situation like this, to be honest, because we only have one contractor that we are in, you know, that is our immediate point of contact in managing this entire situation. But there are, of course, other contractors and the installers and the electrical teams that are working on this job. Prior to this outage, we had, again, we had two transformers that we were replacing. The first of the original transformers was decommissioned to make room for delivery of the first new transformer, which was in place and first energized on February 3rd of 2023. By the end of February, February 28th, after that transformer had been running, we began decommissioning the second transformer to make room to upgrade the switchgear and begin to prepare for delivery of the second transformer. So that was just a few days before the outage on March 5th. While the specific failure of the new transformer is unknown, we consider it at this time a warranty claim. It seems to be an internal transformer failure. The design-build contractor, again, Patrick Engineering, and the transformer manufacturer are conducting an investigation into that, into the cause of that failure, and ultimately to ensure that a second new transformer will not fail in a similar manner, if it's delivered and installed. So at this time, we are on hold with that ongoing solution for the project. The investigation will include a complete, will include a failure investigation on the first transformer in accordance with industry standards. Operationally, briefly, as we reported last time, after making immediate notifications to all of the regulatory agencies on March 5th, our goal was to immediately secure temporary generator power to run the plant. We did have those portable generators on site by March 6th, spent another day or so installing the temporary transformers. We had contracted electricians on site throughout the day on March 7th. By the morning of March 8th, so that was, you know, the three days, we were able to resume pumping, primary treatment, and disinfection. By the end of that week, we, on March 10th, so this was after I reported the last time, we continued to restart processes and equipment so that by the end of, or by midday, March 10th, the plant was able to pump and treat up to 130 milligrams per day, at which point all bypasses ceased. So that's when there was no longer any, you know, bypasses of untreated wastewater during dry weather flow. Since that time, we have been, well, we have had our incineration down, so we incinerate our solids at the Mill Creek Treatment Plant. Because the power, with the power outage for a few days, the incineration temperature dropped below the temperature that it can continue to be operated or continue to be on hold essentially, and then it locks itself out. So for safety reasons, even though we had restored power, it takes quite some time to bring those back up to be able to incinerate. I believe we expect to have that operational again today, so we will be incinerating. In the meantime, we've been storing solids on site. The other, I guess, major portion of our treatment plant is, you know, the secondary that is still, it's not as much because of the power, it is because the secondary treatment includes a biological process, and that we lost all of the biology during the outage, so it's been taking some time to reseed the secondary biology. We have been seeding and aerating tanks slowly, so starting March 11th is when we started reseeding and using biology for full secondary treatment. By March 15th, we were up to, and where we are at today is about 120 milligrams per day of receiving full secondary treatment. We do have additional efforts ongoing to reach our permit, which is 130 milligrams per day of secondary treatment. We also are working towards the additional capacity that we need during wet weather, and as you know, we have a rain event coming this evening and over the next couple of days, so we're really focused on doing everything we can so that during the weekend rain, we can take the maximum possible through secondary treatment, and then we will not have any, you know, issues with that. But that is all to be determined at present. All of the flow, though, we are at maximum, we are at capacity in terms of the ability to pump into the treatment plant and provide primary treatment and disinfection, even in the wet weather. So in parallel to the operational issues, you know, I mentioned we brought the generators on site as an initial step. We did then shift back to our transformer. The old transformer was reconnected, that took some time, but by March 16th, we shifted all of our operations off of the generators and back to the transformer that had previously been connected. And for now, we will be on that transformer, and we will maintain the generators on site until we have another backup solution. So, see, and there's one more thing. I guess, you know, just in terms of that second, the second transformer that we used to have is still on site, but we deem that to be unreliable. So the one that was first decommissioned for the one that failed, we also know that the failed new transformer is unrepairable. So that's really why we're in a situation where, for now, we're looking at maintaining generator power on site as a backup. We do know that there's an extremely long lead time on this type of custom high-voltage electrical equipment, so a different new transformer is not something that we can purchase and have delivered on site. It is something that has to be designed and fabricated and tested, and could take easily more than a year if we have to switch to a different transformer than the one that is already built and ready to be delivered. We're 20 days out from when this failure occurred, so as a result, we don't have all the answers yet, but we are continuing to, you know, provide as much information as we can, you know, to the board, to the public. We are working very closely with Ohio EPA, and we'll continue to do so until we're completely back to normal operations. With that, I know there's a lot of details in there, you may or may not have specific questions, so I'll stop there.
Thank you. Thanks for the update. Really appreciate it, appreciate the team, too, being so responsive in a situation that is not the best, related to the treatment of the sewage going into this facility. So again, a big thank you to you and your team. You have done a really good job of making sure the public is aware of what's going on, and making sure that we, and I assume the city, is also aware of what's going on, so I appreciate that. When you talk about, I just, I'm sure you said this, I just missed it. So we have a, one piece of equipment that is new, but is it working right now or is it not working right now? The one that failed?
The one that failed is not working, and it is deemed to be unrepairable. So the new transformer that was installed on February 3rd, and, well, it was energized on February 3rd, is still on site, but it is not, that's not what we're using. We switched back to one of the old transformers.
So you can operate with one?
Yes.
And that's the challenge here, right? Because you're trying to figure out if you want the other new piece to be delivered or not, and then if not, then we've got, you just said a lag time of about a year until any new piece of equipment can come. So I'm just wondering, since that timeframe is about a year on the one transformer that is the older of the two, is that, what do you think about that? I don't know what to think about the reasonableness of having one transformer for a year, doing all the work that would generally be left to two, and if that's sustainable, and just talk us through why that's sustainable. I'm sure you've thought through all these things.
Yeah, so I have Ryan Welsh, Chief Engineer here, and I'm sure he can answer it better than I can, but the, we've always operated with two transformers, with one being, with each one of them able to fully power the entire treatment plant. So, you know, redundancy was always the, you know, the objective and what we had and what we were getting to with the new project. And the good thing is, and then I'll turn it to Ryan, is one of those two older transformers was much more reliable than the other one. You know, we initiated this project because of the age and the unreliability of the substation in general, but the first transformer that was decommissioned was the one that was showing the, you know, the most problems due to its age and, you know, the other things that we had to upgrade. We were upgrading both, but the transformer we have connected is, you know, that's the good news, is that it has traditionally been reliable and, you know, using it now, you know, at least it still creates the issue of redundancy, but we do feel as though we have one reliable transformer. So I'll let Ryan answer in a little bit more detail than that.
Yeah, I'll try not to get technical, but I will add that we had been running, the purpose of this project is to provide reliability and redundancy. We had been only using one transformer for quite a while because the redundant one was unreliable. Right now, we really have two options to get power, to get redundancy back. The transformer that is in California, they would like to ship it to us. We want assurances that there's not a design problem with that transformer itself or a manufacturing problem that would have the same defect. So it's possible that we get those assurances soon, and it can be shipped, and we can install that. The other thing we're looking at is the one that's still on site that was unreliable, that's not hooked up right now, potentially refurbishing that, sending it out to be refurbished as an interim solution, and then, in the meantime, we're going to try to keep these large backup generators on site, and we're working with the contractor to make arrangements for that so that if, now that we have lack of redundancy, which was planned and it was seen as a very small risk of a new transformer failing the way it did, but now that we have the old one running, we think we do need to keep generators on site. And in the event that this one fails, the generators are there, and the outage should be no more than 24 to 48 hours if we had to reconnect those. They can't stay connected because they're in the same physical space as the project construction work, but I guess that's our contingency plan at this point, and it is developing, but.
So with the new one that's not working, what happens? I mean, we get our money back? I mean, how does this work?
Yes, we're pursuing a warranty claim, and that should be the responsibility of the manufacturer. What actually happens to that transformer, I'm not sure yet, because the way it failed, I mean, there was an internal explosion and it deformed the metal. It's not repairable, and if they open it up, so much energy went into it, I think it all fused together, and there's really nothing to see. So they've taken, they've done electrical tests on it, they've taken oil samples, they've done a lot of testing already, and they're continuing to try to do the failure analysis, multiple parties, the manufacturer, and then our owner's engineer, Patrick Engineering, of course. But I'm not sure if it'll be eventually, if it goes back to California, or if it, or really, it's going to become the responsibility of the manufacturer to determine what they want to do with it. But right now, it's at Mill Creek.
Thank you. Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you. Just a question about Patrick Engineering. You can correct me if I'm wrong, because of the failure, they're going to do the design and the build. But I remember talking about Patrick Engineering before because there was a failure, and maybe it wasn't them, so you'll correct me, Diane. There was a failure, and I remember asking the question in another area, another project, why are we going to choose the same group who developed this project to now come back and design and build the same project? I don't know if you remember that.
So I don't think, so Patrick Engineering is a large national firm, but they specialize in electrical projects, and they usually do work for the utilities such as Duke across the country. We've never, before this project, I don't think we've ever used Patrick Engineering.
Okay.
So we don't have any negative experience with them in the past, and I think they've done a pretty good job here. So we do have a contract, and contractually we'll hold them responsible for what they, I mean, they require to provide continuous power throughout the project. So this is kind of a risk that they took on.
Okay, and since you were saying we're 20 days out from when it happened, how were they chosen? I mean, how were they selected to do this design and build?
Public procurement, so it was a competitive.
That short period of time. Okay.
There's, so Patrick Engineering has been on the project since, it's been quite a few years now. They've actually been on site since August of 2022. So they were selected, you know, through a public process early on, and they design, which includes, you know, the sizing and design of the transformers, and then they hire, you know, then the contractors that do the manufacture, and everything is through them. So they've been our contractor for a few years now, and they were originally selected.
So they were, when it failed?
Yes, yes. So they are the, they are the design builder, meaning, you know, once we have funding and we start this project, we hire them, they've been doing it all. Yes.
That sort of goes back to what I was just saying about having a project fail, and then you use the same one to design and build it again, unless I'm missing something. Right? I can, I mean.
You've got to come to Mike's.
So they, they're our contractor, they, we can't bring somebody else in, like, they have the responsibility to fix it, so we're not asking them to do something new. This is part of the same contract that they had, and it's not a failure, we don't have any reason.
Failure of the equipment is what you're saying.
And they, Patrick Engineering purchased the equipment from the vendor in California. It's the only, as far as I know, the only US manufacturer of these transformers. Why they, you know, that was preferable to select them. But yeah, we don't have any reason to think that the design or any of the construction activities done by Patrick Engineering caused this. It's a, it's really something that is inside the transformer that this manufacturer guarantees and, you know, built for us, for Patrick Engineering.
So when you say design and build, of course, you're not going to build a new transformer, it'll be here, but design and build, it will, it will be considering the location of, I mean, where it should be, how it should be run? Explain that.
So that's, the project itself included really, like, replacing switchgear, transformers, like, all this big high-voltage stuff that you sometimes see at, you know, Duke Power substations. So design-build refers to the contracting mechanism. Most of our projects have. We don't have any reason to.
Failure of the equipment is what you're saying.
And they, Patrick Engineering purchased the equipment from the vendor in California. It's the only, as far as I know, the only U.S. manufacturer of these transformers. Why they, you know, that was preferable to select them. But yeah, we don't have any reason to think that the design or any of the construction activities done by Patrick Engineering caused this. It's a, it's really something that is inside the transformer that this manufacturer guarantees and, you know, built for us, for Patrick Engineering.
So when you say design and build, of course, you're not going to build a new transformer. It'll be here, but design and build, it will, it will be considering the location of, I mean, where it should be, how it should be run? Explain that.
So that's, the, the project itself included really like replacing switchgear, transformers, like all this big high voltage stuff that you sometimes see at, you know, Duke Power substations. So design build refers to the contracting mechanism. Most of our projects are design bid build, which means we hire an engineering design company and we get a full design and we take those specifications and we put them out and we get a contractor. Design build is a different procurement and it's suitable for this, a project, big project like this. It's allowable under Ohio law and it is actually beneficial in a case like this where you have a failure because if this had happened on a design bid build project, we would have a designer who's saying, not my design, and we'd have a contractor saying, not, it's, it is the design. We'd have finger pointing. So this is very, it's actually good in this case. It's not good that it happened, but the contracting mechanism is very favorable.
My question is, and I'm not trying to be.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Did they do the original design build for this project?
Yes.
Yeah, and they're doing it again. Even though you're saying the transformer was a problem, there's still.
Right, we're not redoing the design. We don't have any reason to think there's a problem with the design, but, and we have a separate company checking to make sure. We have a third party, owner's engineer.
That are doing.
That they're, we're doing, we're doing the analysis with assistance of our third party. If there's anything wrong, we'll find out.
Okay.
So, yeah. Sorry if that was too technical.
That's what I was going to add. No, it's, it's okay. I just remembered this happened before, not with them, but another, and I was saying, why do you use the same person where we had an issue? But this is somewhat different than before, so, but thanks.
I just wanted to, yeah, what Ryan was just saying there, I think, is an important point to make. We are conducting at the same time, a, you know, we're still early days, right? But we have another contract with another engineering firm that has its own experts. They're essentially doing like a third party review and.
That's good.
Really kind of taking another look at it and how ultimately the investigation by Patrick is conducted will be critiqued and evaluated and there'll be a, you know, a separate analysis.
That's great.
When it's completed.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you for that. Just a couple of other questions, just on the citizen's side. Can you give us a status of what's happening with the Mill Creek? And then you said that solids are being stored on site. I'm just worrying about odor related to that. And could you just tell us what the status of that is?
Sure. So in terms of the, you know, the Mill Creek and the status of the river, so we have not had any bypasses now since March, I'm losing my dates now, about March 15th, actually earlier than that, other than what happens during a rain event, which really is kind of normal conditions here that it's, while we, you know, work to get all of the flow to the treatment plant, as you know, we have combined sewer overflows when we have rain events in typical operations as well. So during dry weather, it's really been the last, you know, more than a week now that we haven't had any, we haven't had any bypasses. So there, I believe, is still generally a caution in terms of being on the creek because that type of analysis is being conducted by third parties and it's really not our area of expertise to make those recommendations. So I don't want to say it's safe at this time, but the conditions have definitely improved. Yes. And then in terms of odors and incineration, so we do unfortunately have times when incineration is down. We have storage on site. We have various old digesters where we can store our sludge on site. We did provide and have continued to provide updates to the nearby community. There's a cap for the lower price hill community and, you know, just making sure that they know what we're doing. And we have not been receiving any odor complaints for the last two weeks. So the storage at this time has not led to any issues. But as I mentioned, you know, incineration should be operational today and therefore we won't need to continue to store on site.
I don't know about Mr. Dimas's office, but I have not received any odor complaints.
Yes, I was going to say.
That's the good news, right? So, okay, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for the update. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to public comments. I have one card from William Jackson. Mr. Jackson, you've got the pleasure of the floor for two minutes.
Thank you for the floor again. It's warming up outside and it's, it's a different, got to prepare a little bit differently. I don't, I don't know if I shaved well enough today, but I'm going to wing it anyways.
I get to see your eyes because you had to cover up your eyes before.
But anyways, I sent a proposal to you guys that is being talked about, things I'm going to pursue that are happening, that many people are avoiding situations that involved people that have just started admitting they have a problem with not speaking to people for a long time and they've done stuff in people's names, which is, which is fraud. They've tied identities to people without their permission. You can't find these people with a search warrant. We've had many things happen in our communities that involve sexual crimes and murders. When you go to the prosecutor in the city here, they say, well, why don't you talk to the, this guy that, he says he, this guy never represented me. I shouldn't have to say his name. I've called him up, how serious this matter is and what his son's doing behind people's backs with everybody's identity. He tied him to, through the court system here that now we have protection orders that aren't being dealt with properly according to Ohio law that I've had to file to the Ohio Supreme Court because anytime there's a motion placed in these protection order courts, they have 10 days to, if either party files something, there's 10 days that they have to respond according to Ohio law. Our judges are, I don't, we just don't know what's happening to people. We used to hang around, Alicia Reese talks about the people she used to grow up with, moved out of here and they'll never come back. I know a lot of people like that, too, that would probably even say they're friends or family that are using my identity to take out loans and many other things. And if you were to, I've called every one of them. They don't return phone calls. And they would call themselves American citizens, a lot of them that were granted privilege to leave the country possibly without a proper passport and documentation, by the way.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to comments and motions of the board. Commissioner Dimas.
Commissioner Reese. I thought you said Commissioner Reese.
I said Dimas.
Okay. Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Just a couple of things. I attended the One Ohio Treatment Advisory Group meeting where we look at the monies that are coming down for opioid addiction through our pharmaceutical company where there was a suit and we're getting lots of monies to help with prevention and education and research. Our group is a very powerful group. Commissioner Dreehouse is our representative in the state. I'm sure she'll say a little bit more about that, but we're just really ahead of the game as it relates to planning on what we want to do with those monies. Also, my chief of staff, Bishop Hilton, attended the regional safety complex meeting. It's moving right along. We still have a gap as far as funding, but we're looking at the design process and what needs to happen at that complex. So I'm really feeling very positive about the movement in that direction. Had a meeting this morning with Director Patton. He will be presenting a presentation on Tuesday as it relates to child support, child support enforcement and just the concept of child support. And then I will have a new staff person starting next Thursday to coordinate the Inspire Initiative, a part-time person. I know the board is really excited about that. That initiative will allow small groups that are in a community that are trying to move forward and mentor young children and older young adults in activities that they're really active in, involved in, and it boosts their self-confidence. And so we're going to try to undergird them financially, either through equipment, registration fees, or things that they need to move forward so they don't stop working and I know it won't stop them, but it'll make them feel somewhat more positive in the direction that they're going, that they have the monies that they need to move forward. And also, the Small Event Grant has already started. It ends March the 31st. So if any city, township, or village, you have a concert or parade that happens every year and you're outside of Cincinnati, we will undergird some of the funding for that to make sure that you're able to not only maintain it, but enhance maybe what you've already been doing. So that's all that I have, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you. I will not say more about the One Ohio meeting or the safety complex meeting. I agree that we're making forward progress on both fronts, so I'm glad about that. I wanted to talk a little bit about the pay equity signing day that we had yesterday in conjunction with the Women's Fund and the Commission on Women and Girls. We had 40 businesses, nonprofits, government agencies that signed on to the pay equity commitment. We had about 40 last year as well. Commissioner, we missed you at the event, but it was very nice. Mary Mauney was the one that organized it and a big shout out to Mary for, for that work that she did. But Alicia Miller with the Women's Fund spoke about the pay disparity that continues to exist and is exacerbated by, you know, folks not having a firm understanding of the impact of pay inequities. And so she talked a little bit about that and then we had the signing. So it was a huge success and I'm very grateful for the, all the people that came and signed on this year. We will do it again next year and the year after that, so there's plenty of opportunity. My staff and I also attended a Seder at the Skirball Museum at the Hebrew Union College. The American Jewish Committee hosted this and we were invited to participate. It was a kind of a cultural exchange. There were many people of different faiths at the Seder, but we got to learn about the Jewish tradition related to the Passover holiday. So I was really grateful to be able to attend that with my staff. And then also went out to the bus, went to Deer Park. The bus was in front of the library. There was pretty high volume of people at the bus, especially for rent relief, which is, I think, what's been playing out over and over again in different communities. But big thanks to our staff, particularly the JFS staff that was out there. It was, it was well-run and people are still in need and I'm grateful that we were able to provide some relief out in Deer Park. Lastly, there is a by leave. It's the only by leave. We have by leave number one and with your indulgence, I'm going to move that forward. So by leave number one is a resolution changing the time and location of our regular meeting. This is to accommodate the final recommendations from the Commission on Women and Girls. And so the resolution moves the meeting to the evening so the students can participate in that meeting and it changes it to the Board of Elections. So I'm going to make a motion to approve of by leave number one. Senator. Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dimas. Yes, thank you. Remind me of the date of that, Kevin? What is it? It's April 18th. I'm sorry, I didn't mention the date. Thank you. All right, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff Luda.
Thank you, Madam Vice President, or I don't know what we call it today. Commissioner. So no, you already hit the one by leave, just one comment today and that would just be, as our friends from NSD have recently departed here, we do have a severe weather event coming in, forecasted for a lot of rain. I took the liberty with this being severe weather week to reach out to Nick Crossley, who was in Seattle, and I woke him up at 4:45. Forgetting that he was in Seattle, but as Nick always does, he responded. And I just want to thank him and his staff and Bridget for pushing out information to the public again as we're hearing about the rains. One thing just to know that it's going to rain, but to follow all the things that we've been talking about in terms of being cautious on the streets, elevating items up off of basement floors and ground floors, et cetera, just to protect your personal property, et cetera. I understand there's going to be a lot of rain coming, so we're bound to see a lot of flooding and basement issues, so just another word of warning. I think it's supposed to be starting shortly here and through tomorrow, so. And another, just another reminder for folks to sign up for alerthc.org if you want constant information about those types of emergencies that might be coming this way geographically. So thank you, Commissioner. That's all I have for today.
Madam Chair, if I could just make two comments. I wanted to comment on the Equity and Wages event that you had, and I did not attend, but I did watch it on our website and it was just outstanding. Attendance was outstanding and I just thought it was a great opportunity to put it in the forefront. I certainly support women making more money, you know, women being equal at least. So I wanted to tell, wanted to thank you for that. In addition, I just wanted to ask Jeff about the affordable housing that we had introduced, the monies that we put toward that, over 40 million. And I mentioned, I don't know, a couple of months ago about little homes and looking at property to, I just want to start building, renovating, purchasing property. I just want to move that forward and I wanted to know where we are on any of that, the building.
Yeah, so we're finalizing things with CDF right now, so we should be in the business of RFPs going out here very shortly. So I'll provide the board with a more formal update this week based upon your question, Commissioner, but we should be starting that formal activity on request for proposals for projects, et cetera, here very shortly.
And what it's very shortly?
Well, I'll get, I'll get back, no, I don't think that long. Should be much quicker than that, but I'll get back to you in the next.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Yeah, thank you. We're going to move to the regular agenda. The engineer has three items. Todd Long is here. Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioners. We've got three items, as you had mentioned. First is a resolution to set the hearing date for the consideration for the projects recommended for funding, the 2023 municipal road funding. The hearing date if the Commission adopts this resolution would be for the, excuse me, the 13th of April at 1:15. So that's item one. Item number two is a resolution rejecting all bids submitted for the 2023 resurfacing program, Project 502302. Bids were opened for this in February 16th, 2023. We received two bids for the, for the project. Unfortunately, both bids were over the 10% of the engineer's estimates, forcing us legislatively to reject those bids. And then our third item.
Could you tell us how far over?
I can, yes. The lowest bidder was 19.88% over the bid. Next lowest was 32.58% over the bid. So it unfortunately was not particularly close.
So I, forgive, I'm wondering if our estimate was off or if that's the nature of the market?
It's an excellent question. We certainly reviewed that in looking at the particular bids. I hesitate to add fuel to the fire by saying this, but ultimately, we looked at the bids before we put the engineer's estimate out and we had upped that by approximately 20% based on what our previous values were, figuring that was going to be enough to stave off some of the inflationary pressures. But unfortunately, with the next lowest bid being 19% over, that puts it approximately 40% over what we'd seen in the past. So we've definitely sharpened the pencil, if you will, to understand what we can do with market factors. And our third item, we'll actually address some of that today. But unfortunately, we believe we need to request rejecting these bids to be able to try and move forward with the resurfacing.
Number three?
Number three. Number three is a resolution for our 2023 resurfacing program. This resolution is to allow us to put this project out to bid again. We have projects that are located in Anderson Township, Colrain Township, Crosby Township, Green Township, and Springfield Township. It includes the following roads, portions of Benning Lane, Bonham Road, Fort Scott Boulevard, Four Mile Road, Hutchinson Road, Sheed Road, and Wit Road. Ultimately, what we've decided to do to try to achieve the estimate and put this in in a way that we believe we'll, we'll be able to achieve successful bidding. Unfortunately, we had to remove about a mile and three tenths of roadway planned resurfacing to try and keep these into the budgetary factors that we put in place for the actual program itself. So it is unfortunate that we're looking to have to remove certain roads to make this happen, but we believe that this will be a successful way for us to continue our 2023 resurfacing project. And perhaps we'll see, and we did adjust the bidding amounts so that the line item amounts in our contracts to allow for the, these roads to be hopefully successfully bid. Are there questions to this?
So in other words, you increased the amount of the resurfacing to accommodate a higher bid?
The quantities of resurfacing, so there's certain material costs that are associated with maybe the base surface, intermediate course, you know, final course, the parameters that are making up the bid itself. We increased the dollar amounts on the estimates, but in order to do so, we had to kind of keep it in constraints with the total dollars we had budgeted. That meant that we had to remove some roadways in our previous.
Any questions, Commissioner, comments?
Just a question about item three. I see this is 4.6. What is our total 2023 resurfacing program amount?
It's, it's right at that amount. That's, that's what.
That's all for 2023? That's all we're going to do?
That's, unfortunately, that's, that's where we are in the, in the marketplace right now with the, with the revenues that the engineer's office is able to receive. That's, that's where we have our program. That's, that's where we have our program.
Is that normally what we have, about 4.6 each?
This is, it, several years back, it was a $2 million program. We've doubled that to 4 million and restructured the budget to appropriate those types of funds. Any other balance to that, we would have to look at restructuring the internal programatics of the overall engineer's budget that was approved. We can certainly look at that if the Commissioners, you know, perceive that to be a procedural parameter you'd like us to look at, but at this time, that's what, that's what we'd like to move forward with. That's our recommendation.
So five projects that we're agreeing on or not agreeing on, and how much mileage are we, how much resurfacing?
It's a great question. That, the, the total amount is 7.09 miles of resurfacing engineers, which puts, we were approximately at 8.44 miles before with our, with our previous bid, and we're moving approximately 1.35 miles of resurfacing.
That's all I have.
Okay, great. Thank you. I have no further questions, so I'm going to move to approve of items one through three.
Second. Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Adumas?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Todd. All right. The next three items are under the administration.
Thank you, Commissioner. So item number four is an item, this is Resolution P038-23. This is an RFP related to an agreement with Ask Reply Inc. doing business as B2G Now. This relates to our purchasing equipment and software that we are integrating with our diversity and inclusion efforts, and Robert Bell and Jill Williams have been working cooperatively on this project for, geez, close to a year now, maybe, to get this launched. This is really exciting and actually dovetails extremely well into our, all of our diversity and inclusion efforts and our purchasing efforts. So number one, I want to again thank them for their cooperation and coordination on this. It really takes both the procurement office and the diversity and inclusion office to work together on these types of things to make this work, and they work together just fantastic, in a fantastic way. So I think they have a brief presentation they wanted to walk through to update the board on this, and then we would recommend the contract.
Okay. Thanks, Jeff. Thank you. Great, great. Well, you know, I love coming up here when I'm talking about first. First things, and this is another one. This is a big deal. I did some research, and I talked to one of our historians here, Rob Wagner, about, about the financial management system, and I got the names of the last two financial management systems that we used to use, and the latest one we have is 25 years old. And this is a whole new thing for Hamilton County. It's going to make a real change in the way we, we purchase and procure materials, supplies, materials and services. So it's a big deal. But what thrills me most about this is we're getting some software that's going to put us on par with our peers in, in, in Ohio, with the city of Cincinnati and Ohio and across the country, and it's a first for us. But I think it's a necessary first, and it's one that's going to benefit us tremendously. I just want to thank Jill and her staff for, who carried a lot of the bulk of the work we're trying to get these. We interviewed over 10, probably 10 of the top procurement of this type of this diversity and purchasing procurement software around the country. We interviewed 10, 10 of them, and several of them we interviewed more than once, just to try to get a good, the best thing that we could, and I think, I think we really nailed it. So here's what, here's what we're going to ask you to, to approve. The purpose of this contract is to, is to work together to create data that we can use on reports and direct, for direct and indirect spending with our businesses, especially small minority and women-owned businesses. It's going to develop modules for us on vendor registration, contract compliance, spend analysis, outreach and events and bidding systems. The vendor's going to work with us very closely because they're going to design, set up, and personalize a system to our specifications. No one will know that this is B2G. It will all be, you know, publicized and, and structured as Hamilton County procurement system. Behind the scenes, that company will be there, but it's, all the face stuff is ours. They're going to train employees, initial training and additional training is needed, which is always the case. Implement, implement the systems that we need, and Jill and, and their group did a very, very good job of really getting real detailed specifications in the, in the RFP and what we expect. So coming up with the, with, with the contract for them was, was very easy based on the preparation that, that purchasing did. And provides continual support and troubleshooting. The scope, the scope is that it must work with other county, county systems like procurement and others, must produce special reports internally and, and create them in-house, must have firewalls to prevent unauthorized entries, and must have internal and external means of communicating with authorized users of the system. Not only our staff, but also the prime, the prime contractors, the subcontractors, and all the people that are registering on our system. This is, and I'm really excited about this because it's going to help us with the bold list. This is vendor registration. It's going to be self-registration with vendors, including MBE, WBEs and SBEs, and allow vendors to update their files. It's going to have certification management for all the certifications needed for small minority and women-owned businesses and others, including tracking and notifications. We'll be able to search by commodity codes, certifications, et cetera, and has a central directory. An ability to run reports is needed. Now, this last one for me is the MBE/WBE module. Conducts monitoring, tracking and reporting for these groups, monitors compliance of primes and subcontractors, which is very important, the work we're trying to do, create reports on activities, awards and expenditures, can search by commodity, again, certifications, and maintain a central directory, run standard and ad hoc reports as needed, and analyze vendor data and create diversity and inclusion analytics. And the most exciting thing for me is this analytics because for the first time, we'll be able to, in real time, be able to, to recognize trends and patterns and, and results in real time with this software, and that's just going to be amazing to what we'll be able to do in, in really improving the program along as we go and achieving our goals, especially with our inclusion, new inclusion goals and policies.
We will also have a bid system module that we will have online posting for RFPs, ITBs, quotes, and vendor notifications. This is all free to the vendors. All the BOCC departments will have access for the project schedules, tracking, the bid openings, all the information they need for the outreach for the projects. We'll also have a flagging mechanism and checks for all required data and information that the vendors are going to be submitting through their bids. And it's going to conduct all necessary award and contract processing and reporting. We'll be able to do outreach and events as well on this, so it's just a kind of all-in-one system. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Thanks for working. It's obvious that you're working in collaboration with one another, and again, Robert, you know, the disparity study has allowed us to do some of this work, and so I guess this is the next step in incorporating what we're trying to accomplish here into our systems so that they are doing what this board wants them to do, which is open up the process to everybody that has the ability to do business in the county.
And the other thing I want to add, Commissioner, is that this, this is one of the things that the Economic and Environmental Council started promoting from the beginning, as well as the disparity studies. So these things are really coming to fruition.
Yeah, that's great.
They are extremely pleased with what's going on here.
Yeah, that's great. Just moving in the right direction. Commissioner Adumas?
Yeah, I'm really, really excited about it and glad that we were able to do it. I was, I wrote a note about the managing of it. B2NO will be actually managing the system?
The back end, the back end, but, but, but we'll be running it. I'm sorry.
Who's we?
Well, the, just the, the users, all the users will be part of running it, and, and purchasing and my department will be running it behind us.
Okay, okay. And so maintenance and things like, how does B2NO come into effect? What are they doing? They establish the system, but after that, they're done?
No, no. They maintain the back end, which is, which is needing to make all the corrections that's needed. They interface with us regularly. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Okay. Very good. I'm excited, yeah. So when's the startup date you're thinking?
We, we don't know yet. We, you know, after you do this, then we're going to go in negotiations with them to work all that out, and we'll know that in a couple of weeks after the day.
Great.
We'll give you a schedule.
Very good. Anything else?
Thank you. And when you get, when you get some of the data together and you start to see trends, could you bring that back to us so that we have an understanding? It's brand-new information, right? So I know you're excited. We're excited too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it'd be really informative for us to understand what the trends are because we don't have that data right now. We have no way of doing that. So, yeah, we'll look forward to seeing both of you back.
Okay. Got you, got you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so that's item number four. Why don't we roll through four, five and six?
Sure. First of all, just as I go on, I do want to thank our interpreters back there. I see, especially as we have slides up with tons of words on it, they're like actually doing all that, so just want to thank them for, for all that hard work. So let's see, item, I believe, is number five on your agenda, Commissioners, is a resolution authorizing the administrator enter into funding agreement with Wex Garage LLC for 1.925 million over seven years. So just as a brief background on this, as the board is aware, 3CDC is acquiring the Wex Garage, which is part of the Convention District that we've talked about for a significant period of time. It's been the subject of some discussions at some of our past staff meetings. It's under the name Wex Garage LLC to support the development of a headquarter hotel in a development in the Convention District and broadly the Convention District as well. This is a major asset and a major asset for the acquisition and the attraction of a headquarter hotel, and the board has constantly indicated the headquarter hotel as its number one priority. This, the acquisition of this facility is a major benefit, and as we've sat through the interviews on this in late 2022, most of those developers had indicated that the, the acquisition and the ability to utilize that hotel would be a significant cost avoidance and thus avoid additional gap, as we know that we are in the business of closing right now. So 3CDC has obtained a low-interest state loan for 7 million, a loan from the Cincinnati Equity Fund for, I believe, 4.1 million. They have requested of the county and city separately credit support in the form of annual appropriations of 275,000 for seven years. That allocation will go into an account that, as this has been explained in the past, will only be used if necessary over those seven years to pay debt service if operations of the garage are not capable of doing so. At maturity and upon approval of the county, the balance in that account can either be used to pay off or refinance the loan, or can come back to the county. And that's going to, that'll be a conversation that we have as we get further down the road on that path, and will likely depend, at least to some degree, on the, on the policy position of the board, as well as the performance, the revenue performance of the garage and its ability on its own to self-support or refinancing, et cetera. So the city passed a similar resolution on this, I believe it was last week. Just as a, a couple of final notes, the final version of the development agreement for the Convention District project will include language that provides the county, we'll talk about how the county, the city and 3CDC work together to make decisions on what the future disposition of, of the garage is, so that'll be included in the development agreement. And 3CDC will be providing us reports no less frequently than on a quarterly basis just on the performance of the garage, how it's doing from a revenue and an occupancy perspective. I do want to thank 3CDC and their partnership for working through this with us. Mr. Leeper is here today if there are, if there are any questions. We have some, we've been partnering on exchange of information. I know that Steve has made us aware of the, of the, the insurance, the, the phase one environmental assessments that have been done, the structural analysis of the garage, all which have been concluded positively. So with that, Commissioners, I will open it up for any questions. I recommend approval, but also if the board have any questions for Mr. Leeper, I'm sure he'd be happy to answer.
Thank you. Thanks, Jeff. And yeah, Mr. Leeper, why don't you come to the podium in case you, do you have anything to add to the presentation?
I do not. Your county administrator did a very good job there, so I do not have anything to add.
As usual.
But we are closing on the, we have to close by the 30th of March, so we're sort of coming down to the end there. We will front, 3CDC will front the money and then get the money from the state because they do it on a reimbursable basis, so we're happy to front the money to get this done. But it is what we think is an important asset, both for the performance of the hotel, and it's going to require us to do some renovation, but the good news is it is a structurally sound, which was a concern of ours at first, you know? We wanted to make sure that we were buying something that we, was something that could be renovated, and we need to just create some better customer service and some access points to it.
Yeah, I was going to say, the ingress, egress in that garage is challenging.
It's, it's a, yes, it's a.
It's really hard to get in it now, so.
Good way to.
Glad that's on the radar. One question I have is related to the financing. So given the experience that both the county and 3CDC have with parking garages and how they do or do not pay for themselves over a certain period of time, so my, and I, and I agree that this is critical to the district, to the, to the hotel, to the convention center, to the work that we're trying to do with the city, with 3CDC to revitalize this area. So I'm 100% behind doing this. I just want to better understand that dynamic of what we expect we will have to do here as, as we set aside these dollars over this period of seven years. What is the expectation about how quickly the garage will start to pay for itself and how likely it is that there will be some money left over for a future commission to decide how to disperse?
I, it is a very likely scenario that that money will be there and available. So thanks to our friends at the state who have been incredibly gracious to us over the years, they are providing us a $7 million loan. That $7 million loan, we did not have to pay principal or interest for five years, so we have essentially rented that money for five years, and then beginning in year six, it's 1%. So it's $70,000 a year. The garage today is, and it's, it's still underperforming after COVID and after people were not going to conventions, although it is improving. The revenue from that garage will be sufficient to pay all expenses, to pay the 2% on the 3CDC's $5 million loan, and put cash into the reserve along with the money that the city and the county are paying. So there's, we, we have no reason to believe that we're going to hit that, hit either the city or county's money, and that the reason why that deposit's required therefore is because at the end of seven years, if we had to then refinance it at conventional rates, it's conceivable that we couldn't take the state out, but we, if we could, if we had built up this cash, well, we think by then, one of two things was going to happen. Either we are going to do this project or not going to do this project. And we envision that the market is, is going to get better over time because we are seeing that right now absolutely clearly in the roughly 2,500 spaces that we have, more than that, if you count Fountain Square, 3,000 spaces we have in that area where revenues are going nowhere but up dramatically. So I, it usually starts at the center, then moves out to the out, so we think we're only going to do better over time. Your money and your support is very much appreciated and needed, but we are going to try to treat that like our kids' 529 program.
Thank you. Just one quick follow-up then. So given that scenario and the potential that we will not need all of this money that that will eventually be accumulated, is there any mechanism, or is it not allowed to take a look at this, say, mid-cycle, like, you know, three and a half, four years in to say, oh, we are not likely to need the balance that's been built up? And reappropriate that money earlier than seven?
Yes, I think it's totally our intent to do that because we, we have to get this project done, and as part of this project, remember, if the hotel needs it, then it's going to, it's going to provide revenue to that garage, and then we would do a refinancing that would take that out. It is not our intent to think this is going seven years. It's just the protection that you're giving us to do that. But we feel we need to have a, a program in place for exactly two or three years out. We should, we should be able to know that this is, this is going to be able to be taken out if, either fully or partially, but I, I hope it is fully.
So there'll be some kind of review as we go?
Oh, absolutely. And we see it as a quarterly basis and as they, as the members of the county staff working with us on our team as we progress through this planning process, this is, this is an asset that. This is, this is an asset that's on the agenda, and just like we have a financing plan for the Convention Center Hotel, for the Convention Center itself, this would be a standalone financing plan that would be shared and approved and questioned by all parties involved.
Thank you. Jeff, I thought you said that the state gave 4 million. Maybe I heard you wrong or?
State gave 7.1. The, I think the Cincinnati Equity Fund gave, or City gave seven.
It's five, no, seven from the state. You did hear four, but he was saying four from us, but it's actually five from us. Because we paid 11.9 for the garage. The borrowing's actually a little north of 12 million because of reserves and closing costs and things. We've put 5.1 in, and the state's put $7 million in. Sorry for that confusion.
Yeah, that's okay. Other than that, I've done my research, asked lots of questions, and I have no other comments.
Thank you. All right. So that's item number five. Well, let's, you know what, while we're doing it, I'm going to make a motion to approve items number four and number five.
Second.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dimas?
Yes. Thank you. Item number six. Thanks.
I can't thank you enough. I appreciate it. We'll stay on it.
Yep.
Thank you, Commissioners. Item number six is a budget adjustment number five. I'm going to bring or ask Assistant Administrator for Budget and Finance, John Bergen, to walk the board through this.
Commissioners, this is actually a pretty rote budget adjustment, but excited to see it on the regular agenda. So.
You're such a budget geek, John.
Thank you. Thank you. I mean, I'm not going to, I'm not going to go over the, there's some grant items in here, there's some project items in here. Those are the sorts of things you see all the time. The two things I will note are the two general fund pieces here. We have $125,000 into our office of, see, what are we calling it? It's media and engagement. This was when, where we are consolidating the, these media and engagement offices throughout the county. So we knew going into the 2023 budget that we'd probably have to tweak things a bit depending on how we're handling the accounting, and this really is the inside baseball kind of stuff. And so we're looking at consolidating the communications offices both here and JFS and in environmental services. It looks like we're probably going to end up expensing everything in the general fund and then go enter a series of reimbursements from those other pools of funds later on. So this is probably one of the first of several adjustments we'll need to do for that office to do the expenses in 2022 that we'll see coming back probably via our indirect cost plan in 2024. So this is $125,000 worth of non-personnel expenses. The other piece we have today is, is $200,000 worth of expenses for interpreter services in our municipal court, and this is almost exclusively about their restricted fund. Their restricted fund is simply, simply doesn't have enough capacity to absorb these costs in 2023. We hoped it would. It does not look like it's going to be the case. We just haven't seen revenue. We've seen, continue to see revenue falling there, and so we need to move these back into the general fund. So it's moving interpreter services from their restricted fund into their general fund budget.
That's it?
That's it.
All right. Any questions, Commissioners?
No questions.
I have no questions either. Thank you for the thorough explanation. I do love that this is above the line, John, that we get to talk about these things.
We can put them all there if you like.
It doesn't make any sense. So no, no. So I'm going to move that we approve of item number six.
Second.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dimas?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Now we're going to move to the consent agenda, and Jeff, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll just walk you through these briefly. Items number seven and eight are my actions for the first two months of the year. Item number nine is a resolution authorizing a tax-exempt bond issuance refinancing. This is related to, the board had gotten a presentation on this a couple of years ago when the first financing was done. This is for the Willow's Apartments out in Springdale. This is simply the port refinancing these, switching from a variable rate to a fixed rate. There is no impact to the county's bond rating, bond capacity, that type of thing. Item number 10 is a resolution authorizing essentially a purchase order related to outside counsel on behalf of the prosecutor's office. Items 11, 12 and 13 are three vehicles on behalf of the sheriff's office. There's a Chevrolet Equinox, two Chevrolet Equinoxes and a Toyota Highlander. Item number 14 is a award of a bid, ITB 003-23, the Structural Systems Repair Group, for $206,139. This relates to the restoration of the stairs in the southwest stair tower of the East Garage, which is roughly about 25 years old, and in order to maintain safe pedestrian traffic on that stairs, they need to be restored. I believe the, the other stair tower was done last year or the year before. Item number 15 is acceptance of a purchase order for the county communications center and authorizing its execution. This is for $499,844, relates to purchase order with Motorola, and it is for the state's requirement, required upgrades to our Marx radio system. That is the radio system we have, which communicates with a lot of first responders, including state highway patrol and others. It's really the state system that most PSAPs in the state also utilize, and so the state is requiring some improvements to those radios in order to promote cybersecurity. So that is item number 15. Items 16 through 20 are JFS items. I'll walk through these very briefly. I believe Laura Wolf is on the line if there are any questions. Item number 16 is a one-year renewal with Life Start Inc. for foster care services. Item number 17 is an amendment to the agreement with Hearn House for independent living services. They are located in Cincinnati, Ohio. I apologize. Life Start's located in Gehenna, Ohio. There is a renewal of an agreement with Laurel Oaks Behavioral Health Center. They are actually located in Alabama. Their, item number 19 is Kelly Youth Services for group home services is the renewal of an agreement. They are located in Cincinnati, Ohio. And then item number 20 is a different item. This is a resolution authorizing JFS to enter into negotiations with multiple entities for foster care services based upon a procurement that they had done specifically looking to multiple entities. There are 18 providers who have been deemed lowest and most advantageous. This particular item feeds that into the record and authorizes JFS to proceed with negotiations with those 18 vendors. So that is items 16 through 20. We have item number 21. This is related to, it's $148,000 for a CDAP Economic and Community Development Project in Norwood. Maria Collins was here back on December the 6th presenting on this. This is a grant that assists Norway, Norway, Norwood in improving a portion of Montgomery Road between Sherman and Lawrence Avenues. So with that, Commissioners, I think that is the last of them. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. You clarified my question. I had a question on item number 20 relative to the large amount there, but you, since 18 providers are associated with that amount, I near, I have some understanding of why that dollar amount is so high. I have no further questions. Commissioner Dimas, any questions?
Thank you. Item 10, maybe Michael could explain to me the outside counsel. Is that because of a conflict of interest or a lack of staff?
No, this particular one relates to a case out of Texas, and so we needed to get local counsel there to handle it because we can't actually practice in the area. So that's for the local council.
Okay. Thank you so much. And items 11 through 13, for the three cars, is that through the sheriff's budget that that's coming out of, Jeff?
It would, yes, it would be through the sheriff's budget, correct.
Okay. And I think I have one other. I think that was it. You explained the others. That's all I have.
Thank you. I did want to piggyback a little bit on the car one. Can we get an update from the group that's gotten together to talk about EVs and about, you know, we've talked about getting EVs into the mix of cars here at the county. I know that's a process, but I would, I think it would be nice to have an update from that group.
Sure. And I know they're wrapping up some of their initial discussions, so we're happy to provide a report back.
Okay. Very good. All right. So I'm going to make a motion to approve of items number seven through 21.
Second.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dimas?
Yes.
Oh, that was it. Sorry. I am used to the three. Okay, thank you. We do have an executive session, so I'm going to move that we go into executive session pursuant to a higher revised code, section 121.22G4, to discuss collective bargaining.
Second.
Commissioner Dreehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dimas?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.